Items from the public. Yes, sir.
Morning.
State your name for the record.
My name is Al Benjy.
Al, nice to meet you.
I apply after thirty-five years of from the war. So I've been in Burpee County for five years. So I go around, I do presentations all over the country. And it don't matter where it is, churches, everything. I try to answer questions because I was at the World Trade Center. I was there for fourteen days and didn't even come out from surgery before. I was twelve guys in my firehouse. And you're hearing my voice that I did it in a week when I talk about that type of stuff. But I'm here for another reason. I'm here for the firemen all over the country. But right now, I'm here for the firefighters in Burpee County, which I have lived with five years. I come to speak on nepotism that's on the books in Burpee County. I look at, you have lawyers, right? The whole family, right? There were lawyers. You have doctors that actually can operate, sons, daughters, they actually can operate in the same room, on the same person. But with the nepotism, a fireman can't be a fireman because maybe his parents or his brother or somebody is a supervisor or chief. No. I did thirty-five years in rough years. Before I left, I was in a special unit for twenty years. I'm a master diver. I do high angle rescue, so I know. And I've been doing this for a while, presentations. And I call it family, traditional respect. I brought this shirt just to show you that I've been doing it for a long time. If you look under this apple, you see what my titles, I designed these shirts. And you look on the corner of the shirt, I donate all the proceeds, you know, to what we call non-linigenduities families for their children. Non-linigenduities, if you don't know, is when a fireman died, and it has nothing to do with the fire department. So they get zero monies, the family. So I design these shirts, I donate that money towards them. So for the children, you know, for scholarships, that's right. But like I said, I'm really here to talk about the nepotism. I don't call it nepotism. You know, we go so far in technology. But I don't know how long this has been on the books, but I'm sure it's been on the books a long time. You know, and just my opinion, I think it's time that we move on. Because when I, when I work with firemen, I work with a lot of fathers and sons. Who don't want somebody that want to be a fireman? I remember the kids coming up like this and becoming firemen. Those are the guys that when I'm on that hose line, I'm not taking away anything from any other person that want to be a fireman. Or, you know, you'll hear me say fireman because I'm an old timer. But I really mean firefighter. I'm working on, you know, being politically connected.
Just stay where you got it. You got it right.
You got it.
Yeah, I'm working on it, you know.
We're work in progress too, so don't.
Thank you, sir. But this, I would love to have one of those guys behind, you know, because I know what they do, I work. I call them like, I tease them, I say, you were born a fireman. You know what I mean? So it's a long list of family members. So that word is hard for me to pronounce it and say it, nepotism. You know, I have a hard time with that. I call it tradition. And that's what it is. You've fallen in, and most of you can follow in your parents' footsteps. But in Burpee County, there's a problem. And I'm not saying that they have to be in the same firehouse, but the fire department's big, why couldn't it be in another firehouse? And I mentioned before, I don't know whether you know about the O'Sullivan's? The O'Sullivan's in nineteen forty-two, World War Two, was five brothers. They all were on the same, they were in the Navy. They all were on the same ship, and they all perished, right? But they didn't say that brothers can't be in the Navy. They said they can't be on the same ship, you know? So I use that as an example, as the words that I don't like, nepotism. So I'm just, you know, presenting this, maybe we ought to take a look at this. Because we advance so much in technology. But we're not moving on, you know what I mean, in just normal life, you know? Anybody could Google me, I'll leave my card, you could Google me, anybody that know me and a fireman. This is the type of fireman I am, and they'll verify. You know, they say there's a heaven and hell, right? You give me a line, and you give me the right people behind me, I'll try to put that fire out in hell. That's the type of firefighter I am. So I just want to thank everybody for, you know, letting me present this. So thank you very much.
It is a brotherhood.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yes. Okay, any other items from the public? We've got quite an audience out here today, okay? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
Sure.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, no purchase order this week, so we're good to go. You're off again, Tracy. Three internal and budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, you have, the council has three internal budget revision requests. These will be the last three for the current fiscal year.
And you.
And me. All three are from Gary Wine, Information Technology, who always seems to have more money than he needs to spend. I can say that now, Gary. Department four twenty-eight, the first request, Gary's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line three forty-one supplies and materials by twenty thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars with eighty-six percent spent to date. An increase line two eleven for telephone by twenty thousand. That account currently has a deficit balance of fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents. As the council knows, we do, we have certain accounts, account four twenty-four and four twenty-eight, that, for example, in four twenty-eight, we take care of all the technology for all the counties. So when you look at our telephone bill, it's not only the landlines that we have, but it's also all the cell phones that are involved with public safety and things like that. So that all comes out of Gary's account. The next request from Gary is to decrease line two nineteen building and equipment maintenance by fourteen thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cents with seventy-five point six percent spent to date. An increase line two twenty-one dues and subscriptions by fourteen thousand dollars. That line item currently has a deficit balance of thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. And then the final request for Department four twenty-eight, Gary again is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line two nineteen building and equipment maintenance by ten thousand dollars. With the previous reduction, that new unencumbered fund balance will be a hundred and eight thousand, seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cents. An increase line two twenty-three professional services by ten thousand dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
That's it? Okay, thank you, sir. Change in status, a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director for the following. Kendall Cosner as a DRC case manager with the annual salary of fifty thousand, six seventy-six, effective July the fifth, twenty twenty-three. Seth Brown as a home confinement officer with the annual salary of forty-three thousand, one thirty-five, effective July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Change in status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Holly Miller. She is going from part-time custodian to full-time custodian. Her salary will go from seventeen dollars and eighty cents per hour to thirty-one thousand, three fifty-four annually, effective July the twenty-third, I'm sorry, July the third, twenty twenty-three. And let's see, we have approval of the amendments. Everybody was present, but present but me and councilperson Boyd. So you pull those and can we get a motion?
Present, I'm moved to accept the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, and I'll do an abstention for being absent. Council calendar, council calendars. Go through here. All righty, today we're here on the twenty-ninth. July, on Monday the sixth, the planning commission Tuesday, the offices will be closed for Independence Day. Wednesday the fourth is Telemont at four o'clock. I'm sorry, Wednesday the fifth at four o'clock for Telemont. Five o'clock Sewer District and six P M Stormwater District, nothing for Thursday or Friday. Any other additions or corrections?
Mr. President, if I may, as some of you know, earlier today, I received notification from the governor's office that Governor Justice, by proclamation issued yesterday, has declared Monday, July third as a, as an additional holiday for full-time state employees. The proclamation states that any county commission may treat Monday, July third, twenty twenty-three as if it were a legal holiday, and the courts may do the same. I have received notification from the court system that the Supreme Court has also declared Monday, the third, as a holiday.
Well, we'll just dedicate this one to you as your retirement day. So this is the Alan Davis Day, how's that?
Therefore, I'm recommending that the council follow the state's lead and declare Monday, July third, as an additional holiday for full-time county employees, if you see fit.
Okay. That is okay, we'll do that as a consensus, or we can have a motion on it.
Actually, I'd prefer that you do that as a motion, and that way we'll have it codified in the minutes. And I do have the order in your signature file.
Need a motion to declare Monday, the third, as official Alan Davis Retirement Day?
I'm just surprised the governor didn't give us the whole week off.
I'm just surprised the governor didn't give us the whole week off.
Well, you know, if it took more than one day of July fourth, I think we should have the whole week off. I think one day did it.
Well, you're not running for state senate.
No, neither, yeah, you're correct. So do we have a motion to declare Monday as the official holiday for, um, full-time employees?
I'll make a motion to make, uh, Monday, July third, a holiday for full-time.
Okay, have a motion to have a second? Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, and have a day off.
I'm, I'm sure the contractors in the audience appreciate that.
Yeah, hey, I'll be up in Emmitsburg by myself too, so. Alrighty, uh, let's see, we'll move on down here. Oh, yes, sir?
On, uh, the Telemont date, it's agreed to the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. That correction will be noted, thank you, Mr. Barnhart.
Mr. President, I'm paying it. The council's meeting, the regional meeting, but the first foundation is the first meeting on July twelve.
Okay, in these chambers, we'll add that to the calendar. Penny, got that? Thank you so much. Uh, let's see, Board and Commission calendars are good there. We have a bond release for Elizabeth Station, Section F, Phase two A, two B, and three A. Berkeley County, uh, planning file is zero, five, zero, dash, zero, seven tied to file number two zero, zero, seven, dash, zero, nine, five, and two zero, zero, seven, dash, zero, nine, four. Letter of credit is, uh, twelve forty-two. And have a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there any questions on the bond release? For that, are we all good with that? Alrighty, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Mr. Hess, you have, uh, eight personal property exonerations for officer, total value, go ahead, it's all yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do, we have eight of them. For the last, I think, two weeks, this is two weeks worth, but, uh, all of them as listed there for the reasons we had to do those exonerations for personal property heirs. They, uh, they was eight total up to one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. And that's all I have this week.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the, um, was it eight personal tax, eight personal tax exonerations for officer?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, motion to accept the, uh, exonerations as presented by the assessor for the eight personal property, uh, exonerations in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cents.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries.
Good, thank you.
Nice, sir.
I got to say to Alan, um, we've been here, like, since you've been here, I've been here, we've worked together, we've had some ups and downs.
Yes, we have.
And we, and I enjoyed every bit of it. Some of it was good, some of it was bad, but we had a great time.
Fortunately, the good was more than the bad.
It was still a, it was.
But we have luck.
You have a great retirement, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, uh, Board and Meeting Reports, Mr. Boyd.
Well, um, Roundhouse meeting had been moved till, till last night, um, some of the things going on there was a little late this month, so we had all in May and then, and then most of June. Um, recovery concert coming up September the third, uh, that's still on schedule to happen there. Um, we were awarded some money for repairs to the spouting and gutters on the West Roundhouse by the West Virginia Archives and History Commission, the fifty-fifty match, the total cost on repairs there is around eighteen thousand dollars. Um, there's a lot of erosion and, and rot on the building due to the, the spouts and the gutters and different things and flooding. So that's an important thing to get fixed, but, you know, uh, there in late May, we were granted that ninety-one hundred, we just have to come up with a match there. And, uh, we've been working diligently on the big Halloween fundraiser, um, everything's moving forward and going well with that, um, locating some sponsors and different things for October the seventh. We also had a good meeting with James Rumsey with Principal Donna Van Meter about, uh, work projects for students, um, to do different, uh, work on the Roundhouse, uh, you know, that, that's basically in-kind work, we may have to supply some materials, uh, and there, there's a possibility of, of them actually doing a full rehab to the, uh, portable bathroom we acquired in January. Uh, we just have to move it to their property and then we, uh, do, do a full rehab on that most likely, so that's, that's a big, big step for us. And then, uh, of course, the farmer's market continues to grow each week down there, um, it's, it's been a big hit, uh, we've been there about a month now, uh, maybe a little over, and, um, the, the attendance is up every week and more vendors, uh, coming in every week, so that's, that's getting a good, good ball rolling there.
Very good.
Um, as for CBB, their meeting was early yesterday, I was not back in town yet, um, I plan to have a meeting this afternoon to get caught up on what they talked about there.
Okay, that's all. That's it. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, uh, had a water board meeting, uh, they approved, uh, water hookups from Boyd's Crossing, which was right there beside the Monka Hill Plant, ninety-nine townhouses. And then they, uh, also, it was a fairly short meeting, but they, uh, got the results from the water well drilling and, uh, for the supplemental waters, the systems for South Berkeley. They drilled the Shirley property, Jackson Hills, and our county property there, the proposed park here in, uh, Inwood. The county property, they hit some very good fracture zones, and it looked like, hey, they're going to get a substantial amount of water, but they continued to drill and they only got forty gallons per minute. Not enough for a commercial well, but plenty for supplemental water for the, for the park if we so choose to, to do that. Uh, the well on the Shirley property, four hundred gallons per minute. So, um, that's, of course, it's ongoing, they may drill some more wells, but that's, that's the results of this session.
Anything else?
Well, uh, tomorrow, I've got a, uh, meeting in Berkeley Springs, uh, about the Chesapeake Bay. Steve Gatlin signed up, um, and go over some stormwater management programs in, in Northern County, and encompasses both Region Eight and Region Nine, uh, and Chesapeake Bay Alliance. So, that'll be interesting. I'll give a report.
Thanks, Rick. Mr. Gatlin?
At the, uh, Senior Services meeting yesterday, um, you know, it was interesting that one of their events was held recently, it was a prom for the seniors, and, um, they bragged about how many ladies showed up in nice gowns, and, uh, one even showed up with an escort in a limousine.
Oh.
So it was a pretty impressive event, and, um, you know, s- some of those ladies had never experienced a prom in their high school days, and, um, it was a real thrill for, uh, I, I've been impressed since I've been on that board about what all they do for the seniors in this community, and I think it's a great thing. And, uh, hopefully we can continue to support their efforts there. They are working on changes to their bylaws, and that'll be presented to us here within the next week for our review and adoption of their new bylaw changes. Nothing major, Gary, uh, Gary is, uh, on top of that, and, uh, kept everybody in line on the changes, so I think it'll be something to be easy approval. And then, uh, also last evening, I was in Romney for the Workforce West Virginia Region Seven Annual Meeting. Uh, there's eight counties represented in that, there were seven represented in the city of Martinsburg, Kevin Knows, the mayor, we wrote up together and, uh, and, uh, you know, I, I really think there's some opportunities there that the community's not aware of for our small businesses here in Berkeley County, that we need to do a better job of getting that information out to them, because they have some really good programs that, uh, can support their business and help them, and, uh, hopefully we can do a better job of that in the future, so. That's, that's all the meetings I had this week, and I'm looking forward to wonderful Berkeley Springs tomorrow with, uh, Mr. Barnhart too.
Okay, Mr. Coconut?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Mr. Gatlin and I had a meeting on last Thursday, uh, after council meeting with CVC, uh, to go over the Inwood Park design, uh, which is a beautiful layout, uh, they've really done a wonderful job with that. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure how we will fund that, it's a beautiful park, but very, very expensive, so we need to look at being able to scale that back to where we can get something done and be able to afford it at the same time. Uh, also, there's a discussion on Route Nine, uh, East, uh, with, uh, with CEC and CSX, of what's required for us to be able to get across, uh, the railway there, there, you know, they've sent requirements that we have to do for them, uh, to accommodate that, and we will, um, just got to work through that. Uh, on Friday, I met with, uh, Gary and Dr. Branch to work out the SRO payments, uh, that we had, uh, some issues with last year, so that's, that's squared away. Had Zoom meeting with the Attorney General's Office on West Virginia First, um, uh, lady by name of Abby Cunningham will be leading that, uh, in which Anthony mentioned, July the twelfth will be our meeting here at one o'clock. But the Attorney General's Office will have oversight, uh, over that committee. And, uh, yesterday had a construction meeting, uh, on the Dunn Building, uh, which Gary, you know, is taking the lead on, but I wanted, I wanted to thank a whole lot of people there, like, like Jack and Tracy, that worked hard to, to transition that office, they are now in operation this morning, uh, everything moved very, uh, very well. The tax office, uh, was great to work with, and the sheriff, uh, as well. So just thank everybody for the cooperation and making that happen, because time, uh, was very critical, uh, with that move. And also, uh, yesterday, we met with Wayneboro Construction, who will be doing the, uh, construction at the David Port Center, we met with their, uh, staff, their crew, and, uh, they look to be getting started on August the one, and hopefully completed by August eleventh of twenty twenty-four. So lots of, uh, construction stuff going on, and, and, uh, and everything seems to be in line and on speed, on time.
Uh, Jim, I think the city's going to have a, uh, dedication of the Frog Poll trail on July the eighth, which is a week from Saturday.
Yep, we'll be there, and, and actually, the mayor and I are continuing the, uh, the competition of the duck race, so we have a friendly wager to, uh, benefit the, um, Recovery Resource Center, so. And Doug is in the audience here, so he was the one initially started that one with the mayor, and, so I'm, I'm, what's that?
I almost throw away that.
Well, you know, something about water and, and being a Pisces, I always seem to fall in myself, so, but I wanted to thank Doug for, for starting that tradition, and hopefully we'll keep it up, so. Um, but yep, I'll be there to, to participate also. Um, the only meeting I had was, uh, the MRB Foundation, which is, uh, coming up here on Saturday for the Independence Day Celebration, we discussed that, and I think, uh, Mr. Deal will be in, as well as, uh, uh, also with the Airport Authority and, and, uh, one of our representatives there, Dan Delia, they'll both be, uh, discussing that here shortly, so I'll leave the, the favors to them. That's all that I have, is there, uh, anything else for more board meeting reports?
Uh, yes, sir, I'd like to, uh, reappoint Tim Lewis to the Berkeley County Planning Commission. Uh, Tim currently serves as the Vice President, uh, of the Planning Commission, and is really engaged and, uh, really, uh, does a good job.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. And we have a new application received from Rebecca Linton for Berkeley County, uh, Senior Services Board, do we want to bring her in for an interview?
She's going to come in next week.
Next week, okay. And also an application received from, okay, somebody help me here, Penny.
Mr. Lugo.
Mr. Lugo, okay, for the Berkeley County Development Authority, so we'll bring him in also. Uh, Board and Commission interview for, uh, is Mr. Bennett here?
He is.
Okay. Oh, you did, that's right, Penny, thank you. I'm sorry, we'll get right to you. We have an honorary councilperson and a couple of them that we're going to bring up here, and Eddie's going to swear in?
I'd like, I'd like for Alan to have that.
Oh, okay.
Swearing his grandchildren, I think that'd be great.
Swear out or swear in?
Well, Alan usually swears at us, but he's going to swear them in.
It'd probably be easier if you just spread, spread that and have them say.
And most of the time, you deserve it.
Yeah. And this is probably one of them, isn't it?
You want to take him in front of the scene or you think it's bad?
Yeah, nice photo. I'm going to move out of the way.
Come up here, come on, stand up, come on, stand up. Come over here with me. Here, come on, guys. Get through there. Okay, stand there, you stand there. Raise your, your right hand, raise your right hand, Olivia. All right. I, Jackson Cockburner.
I, Jackson Cockburner.
I, Olivia Cockburner.
I, Olivia Cockburner.
Do swear.
Do swear. Do swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill.
That I work hard to fulfill.
The responsibilities of the office.
The responsibilities of the office.
Of honorary council member.
Of honorary council member.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go. That's your certificate. Has this one been signed?
Yes, sir.
There's yours, Livy.
Congratulations.
Good job, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, good job.
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, it was. I was, that's okay, it's, uh, I was going to say, I'll open up the podium to Jackson and Olivia, do you have anything you want to say?
Everything you want to say.
Livy, you want to say anything?
I can't believe I left somebody speechless. Alrighty, well, congratulations, guys. Alrighty, can you get right back here to the, uh, application? Let's see, we have a commission interview for, um, Mr. Bennett, would you come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself, and let us know what, uh, what you have in mind for the, uh, Farm Land Protection Board?
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for having me in this morning. My name's Bill Bennett, uh, I've been a Berkeley County resident since August of nineteen eighty-six, uh, when I moved to Berkeley County, it's a little over thirty thousand people, and I think we're probably pushing to a hundred and twenty thousand people right now, plus or minus, I'm not sure yet.
One third of, yeah.
All that being said, uh, I guess I'm, I'm saying that to, uh, stress the importance of, uh, Berkeley County Farm Land Preservation Board, uh, the things they do, uh, the ground and things that we're able to put in and preserve, uh, which we otherwise would not be able to. I worked for the U.S. Department of Agriculture for thirty-four years, I retired, uh, April first of twenty twenty. Uh, I have dealt with the Farm Land Preservation Board since its inception, the original meetings, uh, as far as implementing it, uh, had some input on that, not a, a great numbers of input, but some input. And since that time, I have worked with dozens upon dozens of farmers, landowners in Berkeley County that come in and file an application for the Farm Land Preservation Board. Typically what I would do is set up a farm record for USDA, eligibility requirements, the whole two of that, so from that side of it, uh, I know a little bit about what's going on, and, and I think with my experience, uh, with USDA, I can be beneficial in this I have, my wife works for the Parks and Rec here in Berkeley County, she's the, uh, Fire Officer for them, so I know, I know at least, Mr. Coconutters have dealt with her in the past, I have two children, uh, older, my son lives in, uh, Phoenix right now, and my daughter lives in LA. So I'm very serious about whether they'll ever be back to Berkeley County, but possible. From the, the side of actually wanting to serve on the board, board is probably twofold, uh, one, uh, Steve Gatlin was appointed to that position and he was looking for a board member, asked if I had any interest in it, and I do for a couple reasons. One, uh, I like to say I think I can help, and the other thing is, a lot of times you can't, uh, you can't make change or get things changed from a distance, same as you fellows in, you know, where you have to actually, uh, or think you need to be involved to, uh, have an input, have a voice in that, and, uh, you know, a few things that I think, uh, the program sells itself, Berkeley County has the most successful Farm Land Preservation Board in the state by far, for a couple reasons. One is we have more money than anybody else, because of the taxes and things on, you know, the real estate, and so it's in a good pool. The other thing is we have, we still have quite a good farming grant, uh, if you can believe that. I guess probably since two thousand six, seven, and eight, when land was going nuts. successful because we're getting in good farms, we're getting in farms that, family farms, farms that big acreages and things along those lines. So I'm kind of talking in circles, I think, but that being said, I think I'm qualified to hold the position and I do my best.
Sure. Start with Mr. Boyd, he'll ask questions if he has any.
I don't have a lot, I mean, you seem to be really qualified to know what you're talking about. I do have a question, and maybe you can answer, maybe you can't. Do any of the orchards qualify under farm protection, or is it just farming farms?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely qualified, and I guess it's probably Dan, probably the last bachelor was two years ago, and that was, I don't know if I should say the name or not, I mean, it's public information, but for instance, Orr, was George Soren's son that broke up, and I think it was Mike's side of it that got in, but that was a massive piece of ground, and 90% of that ground was yours, so, absolutely. And you know, really, as long as you're being assessed, and the assessment's really big, as long as you're being assessed in Berkeley County with farm use evaluation, typically qualified. Yes.
Mr. Barnhart?
For your efforts in agriculture, the only thing that I would encourage for the farmland protection is advertising. A lot of people may go down the road and see the preserved forever sign, but that is it as far as their knowledge.
And I'll answer that in my opinion. My opinion is like right now, for instance, they, four years ago, they had 23 applications, three of them were funded. Okay, so you say, let's advertise. Okay, then we're going to have 40 people coming in and filing applications, we're going to have three, but to your point on that, of those 40, we're probably going to get one or two that should be in there. We're going to get more qualified farms, so absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not implying that we need advertising to get more people, we just need advertising to let them know that these farms are protected forever. Here's what's protected in Berkeley County forever, and that's real.
Yeah, because I mean, the signs that we've got are like that, and typically they're stuck in a spot on the farm that's not necessarily noticeable, so we don't, the taxpayer don't realize, and a lot of them see it, a lot of them are donating, I mean, in addition to the ones that, you know, the board buys or the county buys, so you never kind of know exactly what's going on there, but absolutely, I think the advertisement would actually increase the quality of applications you got.
Exactly.
They're actually discussing that, Jim, at meetings now, and I think Risa, the new director's going to pursue that to get better signage for the farms that are in protection at this point. And I don't know of anyone more qualified in Berkeley County to serve on this board than Billy Bennett, so he's as qualified as anybody in this county, so.
And you have a position?
We do, we do, yes. We actually have to get Jennifer sworn in. She replaced Sandy, that one position is Executive Director of the Development Authority. So Jennifer's been serving, but she's never been officially sworn in, so I think we've reached out to her, Anthony has, right? Yeah. But other than that, there's one other position, and Billy would be a perfect person to serve in that role, so.
Very good. Eddie?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bennett, appreciate you applying for this because I'm like Steve, I think you're very familiar with the agricultural business in this county. I think that you'd be able to represent the farmer, probably like he's never been represented before, and because I'm sure you've dealt with nearly every one of them, or orchardists across this whole county. A lot of people don't realize that we have right around 8,600 acres in farmland protection. You know, it's a lot, but it's not, still not enough to be able to protect the beauty of this county. So I appreciate you applying for this position, and I think you'd be a great fit.
The only question I have, do you feel that the process could be improved on when a farmer, or I guess an individual applies?
Mr. Riddick, to be truthful with you, that's the reason, from the personal side of it, that I threw my name in the hat.
Okay.
100%, because the board has a ranking criteria that each piece of ground that submits an application has this program.
Goes through.
Okay, and I've seen this from both sides, but I've seen it from the side of the USDA side, and I've also seen it from the side as an individual, I'm 68,800, I own a farm on Able School Road in Berkeley County, it's about 35 acres of corn this year, so I know a little bit about that side of it too. And I think that, I think that the board, that the Farmland Preservation Board needs to be more involved in the actual applications that come through that office. I think that ranking criteria needs fine tuned a little bit. From a selfie side of it, I'm looking for farmers when I do this, and that kind of, you can have ground, for instance, me, I do mine on the crop share, okay, but I don't have the machinery and the things involved. I mean, I've got tractors and stuff like that, but I don't have, I can't combine corn, I don't have planters, I don't have things along those lines. So whenever you see, and I'm not, I don't even mean to do this, but you see like the area that used to be on Route 9, if a farm like that puts their application in, they should be, in my opinion, hopefully, with the ranking criteria and the things involved with it, the David rank is very high, you know what I'm saying? And I'm looking for, from the personal side of it, I would rather see a farmer get in than somebody, even somebody like me that owns the ground and maybe not, it's not my full-time livelihood, and, but absolutely, 100% answer your question, and that's the reason that I want to be involved in, because I think there can be some changes, positive change. For the most part, it's, they've got it down to size, the board, prior directors, the board members that are serving on there now, but there are things that I think that I want to be able to voice, I know maybe I can or cannot get them changed, but...
I was just thinking with your past employment with the USDA and then coming on this board, that that marriage would be very successful in implementing or maybe getting some other legislation written that would make it qualify.
And also Mitch, one other thing, there's also money, there's USDA money through the Natural Resources Conservation Service that's sitting there that's unlimited, and we have chose at times, some of the bigger ones through the last few years, the board has tried to, the Farmland Preservation Committee has tried to jump on and get some of those bigger ones funded, but a lot of years was never even submitted an application to that, so I'm talking about unlimited funding that could be grabbed and pulled in on this.
Now, to help supplement?
100%, yeah, and sometimes they do a 50/50, sometimes it's all NRCS, but it's a little more difficult because of federal government, the rules, regulations, requirements are a whole lot more hectic, I mean, if I'm going to come in as an individual, I want to sign up through the Berkeley County Farmland Preservation Board in your local one because the requirements are way less. But that being said, there still is that opportunity to draw in that other money for other ones, you know, like you're only going to fund one or two this year, take applications three and four and see if you can get some of that money. And it's not as easy as I'm saying, and I understand that, I mean, some of these, it takes some years to get, you know, to get somebody into a, into an applicant, or into an easement. So I understand that, it's not, there's nothing to be done fast, but I think there's room for improvement.
As always.
And if the council will recall, we're in an enviable position where with transfer taxes, you know, it was a third, a third, a third for a very long time, that's been changed, but even with the changes, a third of the transfer tax still is dedicated to farmland preservation, and for the past, I don't know, five, six, seven years, that's been well in excess of $1 million a year. So unlike a lot of the counties, we do have the local funding that we don't have to depend on the federal funding for, but as Mr. Bennett said, when Mark's been in in the past, he's addressed some of the difficulties they've had negotiating, the system and the process of getting federal funding, so Mr. Bennett certainly, I think, is familiar enough with that, that certainly could help out the new executive director.
Yeah. Yeah, that fund for the farmland actually hit $3 million two years ago, and it's $2 million this current year, it's going to be 2.3 or 4, so it's doing very well, but I'm ready to make a motion that we, that we place Bill Bennett on the Farmland Protection Board. Okay.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We'll have you some paperwork to have you sworn in at the clerk's office, and we'll go from there, so congratulations. We usually, we...
By the end of the day, Tracy will have your paperwork ready, we'll make sure you get that, that way you'll have a week to get sworn in, the next Farmland Protection Board meeting is the 10th, that way it gives you a week to get everything ready. Tracy will be in touch with you, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, next up is Rick Trinari, candidate for the museum board. Come on up, Rick. Rick, tell us something that we don't know.
Fred, it's, this is an open book here. Thank you all for having me here today, the opportunity to possibly be on your museum board. I, as most of you know, lifelong resident here of Berkeley County, self-proclaimed automotive, antique automotive expert, and I think that's possibly why I'm here. I definitely believe in giving back to the community. Been on various boards and so forth, the Lions Club, Habitat for Humanity, friends of the Norwalk Foundation, church, so. What else can I tell you about?
Well, you know, Rick, when I reached out to you, sometimes that, you know, being up here and you reach out to a friend and ask them to want to do something for the community, there's, you know, I'm a little bit apprehensive about it, but I'm really glad you wanted to at least come in and give it a shot for us, so. If HD can, we'll start off with HD, if he has any questions for you.
I see that you are current Vice President, friends of Norwalk Foundation, so we were looking for someone from that organization to be on this board. A important part of that museum is to hopefully bring the Norwalk car here to be in the museum, so you look well qualified. Do you have anything to speak on the car?
That actually has been our objective since day one, and we brought the car back from Colorado. Of course, as many of you know, it's a Hagerstown accident. Other than Freddie Gant, I am the only one that has ever driven the car, and of course, I'm the last one to drive it into the museum over there. We'd love to see that car back here, Berkeley County.
Mr. Barnhart?
Rick, it's been a while.
Been a while.
You've aged well. Oh, okay. That's not the word I was going to use, but I'll go with it. The membership of the museum board, of course, you represent the Norwalk, but the museum board is much more than that. So how do you feel about being on the museum board and the history of Berkeley County and all that? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, I do. I'm a history buff, and matter of fact, if you would come to my home there in Wood and see my garage, my granddaughters call my garage Pats Mini Museum, and a lot of the things in there are either automotive or Berkeley County related. As a matter of fact, I just, before I came here, I stopped and took a picture of the old Chrysler dealership, it was on South Queen Street, and that goes back before many people here, because I'm going to have a car on display, Chrysler Carlisle, that was sold from there, so I've been doing a lot of research on that here just recently, so yeah, it's not only the Norwalk car, I mean, I, yeah, I definitely, I guess maybe due to my age and listening to older people, know quite a bit about the history of Martinsburg and Berkeley County.
Well, we're way back.
Yes, we do.
50 years.
Yep.
Mr. Catlin?
Knowing Freddie Gant as well as I did, and if he trusted you to drive that car, then that's enough to convince me that's...
Yeah, I think most of us in the organization is pretty protective of the old car, yeah.
And it was a wonderful thing that that organization did to get that car back here. Hopefully, we can get it in Berkeley County sooner than later, so we really appreciate your interest to serve, and thank you for that.
Eddie?
Yeah, I was happy because you were enthusiastic about serving on this board, and that always helps, you know, when you ask somebody, you show a lot of enthusiasm and interest in it. And, you know, this all really truly started because of that Norwalk. Doug and I met on a cold January night with some folks down in that, in that old building, and, you know, we said then that night that we would work to try to get that car back over here, and, but there's so much history in this county from all walks, and we want to be able to showcase it under one roof, and we know that that car is very important to a lot of people, and people worked very, very hard to get that car here, and I know you were one of those persons, so thanks for that. But, but just being able to come in on the ground floor and set up all the articles of the corporation, all the constitution bylaws, how this is going to work, and to be able to represent everybody and understand that everybody has their little niche that they may have interest in, but the ability to work together to build us a beautiful museum is really important, so I want to thank you, you know, for your interest and all the work that you've done to help get that car here.
Rick, the only thing I can say is I've seen some of your restorative work, and it's just been beautiful, so. With your knowledge and bringing it to that...
I'll be the guy that'll handle it.
Well, you know, mine's always been dirt. Still trying to get out of that hole I dug about 35, 40 years ago, but anyway, I do know that you would definitely be an asset in preservation of not only automobile and the transportation, but, you know, in the history of the whole county itself, so. I just had a statement, I don't have any questions, so. But I really want to thank you for coming in and your willingness to want to give back, and it means a lot to people of the county. Anybody who wants to give back to this community is always welcome to come in, and we'll always find a place for somebody, so, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All righty, we're going to do for a break here, and then we have Tim Ziya coming in here pretty soon, so we're going to take a little break. So we're going to take a little break.
I was gonna say, yeah, you got things to do and people to see today, huh? We're back in session and we're gonna have Tim Zaya come in with Community Corrections and a Mobile Dental Unit funded by Jobs of Hope. Come on up, Tim. Tell us what's going on.
Good morning.
Morning.
So you all know that a lot of our folks at the Day Report Center and Confinement Program at Medicaid. Medicaid provides dental care for juveniles but not for adults. So we've got a whole lot of people over there that have healthcare through Medicaid but they don't have dental care. Aaron Gertner, who's our local Jobs and Hope rep here in this region, has identified some funding through the West Virginia Rural Health Association to have a mobile dentist unit come up and set up in our parking lot, if you all allow for it, to provide dental services to our folks at the DRC and Confinement Program who have Medicaid. This would only be for our participants, it's not gonna be something to the public. Our case managers coordinate with the dental unit to set up appointments. It wouldn't just be a one-time visit. It's actually like establishing a relationship with the dentist to come every couple of months or so and do follow-ups and do fillings and extractions and such.
Do the cleanings and everything?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Is there any cost involved?
No cost to the participants, it's funded through the West Virginia Rural Health Association. So I'm here to just ask if that's...
Full coverage? Full coverage. It won't cost participants zero?
Correct. No copays, nothing.
But it's only for participants in our program, right? And they would have to be cleared through their case manager. And Tim and I met two or three weeks ago and I thought it was a great idea. And we originally had asked, what's the lady's name?
Aaron.
Aaron to come in and unfortunately she was not available. We're just asking the council for space. And that's something that we would have to work out, particularly with the new construction going on, probably to the, as you're looking at the building to the far right-hand side, probably closer to Raleigh Street, but we can figure all that out. Just asking the council for permission to allow them to come in and provide this free dental care to the participants. Again, just another, you know, just another service that this council endorses for the DRC.
I'll tell you, dental health is one of the important considerations to the general well-being of a body. Yeah, of a person. Maybe number one.
Yeah, one of the challenges that we have is there's, years and years of drug addiction can frequently lead to loss of teeth. There's a number of people that kind of just destroy their teeth with their drug use. They get clean, they establish some recovery under the belt and they want to get dentures. Dentures are expensive and there's no coverage for them. People have to pay out of pocket for those things. Yeah, dental care in general is very important. Medicaid doesn't fund it. So I believe this is a really good opportunity for them to get some dental care.
You say all your participants, not all, I'm trying to ask majority of your participants are under Medicare?
There's probably roughly between a third and a half.
Yeah.
Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Tim, how often will just a fan, whatever, come in to the office?
To be determined. What I've been told is as frequently as necessary. I would suspect once every three months or so. They'll meet with a group of people, you know, over a period of a few days and then schedule follow-up appointments if necessary.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
It's like, almost like a traveling clinic for the state.
Yeah.
I can't see why we wouldn't.
Apparently this mobile dentist unit is already set up and doing business in the southern part of the state. This would be the first time that they get situated up in either.
Does this have one unit or is it several units?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know there'll be at least one coming to us.
Very good.
Mr. Rarhart, you mentioned Medicaid. As you know, late last year, we finally got licensed, you know, designation as a licensed behavioral health facility, which allowed us to really, you know, start billing Medicaid and that's taken a while to get some traction. We have set up the separate revenue account so that all the Medicaid payments come directly into this special revenue account so that it's not being co-mingled with general fund monies. We're in excess of $300,000 now, Tim, just through Medicaid billing. So it's, and it's just really started in earnest, so that will help offset any future costs, any eventual increase in some of the grants.
Because they could improve their self-esteem, especially getting started back out.
Just their health in general. Dental health works right in with the general health and, I'd say, self-awareness and all this kind of thing.
One of the causes of bleeding heart disease.
Yeah.
That dental hygiene. All righty, motion.
I'll move to accept the request for the placement of the unit at the Day Report Center.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we're almost a little bit ahead of time. Nick Deal, CEO, Executive Director, Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport. Update on airport July and August events.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Good morning. And you got your entourage with you.
I do, I brought my board president and vice president with me and we just wanted to...
They're standing behind you, so be careful.
I first want to say thank you very much for your support, not just of the airport authority but of these events as well. We've been very busy putting things together for this independent celebration. I think it's gonna go great. May have a little bit of rain, but we dealt with that before. So it's not a showstopper. The, we're gonna have three bands, we're gonna have several food trucks out there this year. We've worked very closely with the Sheriff's Department and with the State Police and Department of Highway. We've got a great process for getting folks out of there this year and getting them back out. We had a meeting yesterday and a state trooper in the meeting, he is, actually works the WBU games. And so he thinks that we're gonna have everybody out of that field in about 30 minutes, which is, which would be nice, to get things cleaned up a little more quickly. So we were excited about that. The, we're gonna have a kids' village put on by the Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Copenhaber has already volunteered to do the dunk tank with anybody who wants to play. And we're gonna have, on the other side of the field, we'll have a beer garden and multiple food trucks and we'll have a chalet there for the MRB Foundation and for the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport. And I think we dropped off some passes for all of you, so certainly hope you can make it. If you need more, please let us know. And the, that's really about it for the July 1st event.
I was gonna say, give us a little bit of a recall from last year, what was expected and what we, you know, what the participation was.
Yeah, so last year, we thought we'd have 2,000 or 3,000 people, we ended up with about 7,000. It was a pretty large crowd last year, a lot bigger than we anticipated. This year, we prepared for 7,000, probably have 2,000 or 3,000 this year. We'll see how it goes. Hopefully it'll be a great turnout. There is another event, a similar event going on in Jefferson County at around the same time. So some of our Jefferson County attendees likely will go to their own county for that, which is fine, but at the moment we'll probably try to do both.
Good deal.
So should be, should be a lot of fun and the airshow on August 26, 27 is coming right along. As you all know, we have an F-22 as our, as our, as our military team. We have another one that we think is coming, but I'm about 90% sure, but I'm not gonna make an announcement yet because I don't know. So when I'm 100%, you'll be some of the first people to know. That'll be, I think it'll be fun.
We've got a couple more weeks to hope for that.
Got a few more. So we're, we are moving right along and I will give the microphone to my chair in coat and vice chair to see if they have anything particular to say.
Well, you know, it's actually really great to come in here and watch you guys do this, what you guys are doing, because there's a lot of good things happening here today. I've seen, you know, some great candidates you guys have coming up here, you know, to see you guys doing business like that. I kind of miss it, I haven't missed it until today when I see all this good stuff happening and plus Alan leaving, you know, you've got a lot of good stuff happening.
Now, now it turns into, now it turns into the roast.
Had I known you were gonna be here, I would've called in sick.
Now I told you, it was gonna turn into the Alan Davis roast that you had started.
Yeah, well, but, you know, I mean, all jokes aside, man, we really appreciate the funding. The event last year was great, we're hoping for the same type of thing to happen this year. Really appreciate what the council does to support the airport. So wanna, you know, wanna make sure you guys have a personal invitation to come out and enjoy it with us.
Well, let's give one more shout-out to the sponsorship of the event on Saturday. Our main sponsor is CMC.
CMC Steel.
Steel. And so they, they're committing quite a contribution to this, so they're gonna be a great partner for Berkeley County over the years. I can see it coming.
No, and I can see it continue to grow, you know, and it's a, it's a good thing, it's a good thing to have a community event like this where people can just come out and enjoy themselves and see, you know, what our airport and their airport has to offer for the community. So thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you.
Did you guys offer passes to the city council?
Yeah, we dropped off passes.
Absolutely. So this year, let's get over there earlier so maybe we get a better participation from you, you know. It was a little late, but, you know, I didn't feel we got the participation we maybe should've and hopefully moving forward in the future, we get a little more participation from it. Because, you know, as we know, the city fire watch is hard to see from anywhere. I think this is a good collaboration to work with the two organizations and bodies together.
We hope, we hope to see that relationship with the airport to continue to work on both sides, with the city and the county and continue to, continue to make that, make that effort grow.
Very good.
Just really excited about all of the events that we've got coming up and really just wanted to see you guys come out and have a good time with us and see all the community and everybody together and have a great event.
I do know that the actual birthday of the airport was actually last weekend.
Yep.
And some of the guys out there got a community event together and had a camp fly-in. So they had a couple participants that actually flew their plane in, pitched a tent and they had a little event that they took in. So we're gonna hopefully expand on that over the, over the next couple birthdays, so turn it into a major, major.
Yeah, we've, and we've been hosting a bunch of other groups at the airport, so you all have probably seen on several weekends, you've seen flying groups coming through and doing...
Formation.
Yeah, formation practices and things like that. So it's a, it's a real, it's really becoming a, we're the second busiest airport in the state now, right behind Morgantown. So we're actually busier than Jaeger or Clarksburg or some of these other commercial airports. And did want to say, Alan, thank you so much for all of your support over the years and you've been a big help to me and to the airport, so I'm certainly gonna miss you. You should come visit us sometime.
There you go. Thanks.
All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
We'll be, we'll be looking forward to this weekend. Oh, we need a letter of endorsement to...
Hey, Nick.
Nick.
Nick. The letter of endorsement. Letter of support.
Is it, letter of endorsement, unfortunately?
This is just typically the letter that we issue to events so that they can serve beer, alcohol premises for the days, the days of the event, which in this particular case is the airshow on August 26 and 27.
Yeah. It's nothing any different than what we do for any other nonprofits or...
Pretty common, we just need for you to approve, which we would recommend.
Yep. Can I have a motion to approve the letter of endorsement for the sale of alcohol at the event on August 26, 27?
Sure.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very, very much.
We'll have that too.
Okay, thanks.
Alan, you're up again.
Yes, sir. As the council's aware, a year or so ago, you made the decision to demolish 126 West King Street, which we've done. We removed the asbestos and had Reclaim come in and demolish that building. We fact-filled it. Hopefully this summer yet we'll repay that parking lot. We'll be, we'll be doing some pavement to the side of the Judicial Center after that construction's done and we hope to just kind of piggyback on that contract and then we'll pave the, the area where the footprint for 126 was located. But as part of that process, you did decide that 110 West King Street hopefully will be used in the not-too-distant future as the Berkeley County Heritage Museum. And it's been designated, we actually have, we had the preliminary design work done by Crabtree, so we had to have the preliminary work done so that we could apply for some grant, grants through the West Virginia Commission on Arts, which we've done. We have put the roof replacement out for bid. We had Roberts come in and they removed the two rooftop units. We had Winchester Environmental come in and they tested the roof and we did some core sampling and did, you know, some of the rubberized area. There is no, there is no asbestos on the roof. So we did, at your direction, put the roof replacement for 110 West King Street out for bid. You opened bids on June the 15th, we received three bids. Highmark Roofing, which is located in Hedgesville, recommended or bid on a 20-year roof at $72,309.42. They are a relatively new commercial building, roof contractor, so we did get their certification to install and warrant the roofing. They will only do a 20-year roof, they will not do a 30-year roof. I did check on that, Steve. Blackstone, and we have not done business with High Point Roofing in the past. Blackstone Roofing out of Winchester Avenue or out of Winchester, Virginia, bid on a 20-year roof, $111,000. They did bid on the 32 roof, 30-year roof at $124,000. We have extensive experience with Blackstone Roofing. They not only did the roof replacement for 750 Baltimore Street, which is the metal roof, about a million, a million-dollar roof job, and they also did the roofing on 800 Emmett Rowse Drive, which is the current Recovery Resources Center. And then Hard Hydler Roofing out of Hagerstown offered bids on 20 and 30-year. 20-year roofing was $131,448. The 30-year roof was $153,696. We've also done business in the past with Hydler Roofing and they're very direct people and have done a good job for us. The building committee did review the bids. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder deciding whether, depending on whether the council wants to go with a 20-year roof or a 30-year roof. If you decide you want to go with a 20-year roof, we're recommending High Point Roofing in the bid amount of $72,309.42, which is the low bid for the 20-year roof. 30-year roof low bid was Blackstone Roofing LLC in $124,000. If the council will recall, we did receive a $70,000 grant from the West Virginia Commission on Arts, however, that is a 50% match grant, so that, for example, if you decide that you want to go with the $72,300, roughly $310, the grant will pay $36,155. the grant will pay thirty-six, one fifty-five. If you went the thirty-year roof, the grant will pay sixty-two thousand and, and the council will, will be responsible for the match. You typically ask where the matching funds will come from. You have money in your coal severance fund, which is unencumbered, which will roll over until next, to next year. The current unencumbered fund balance in coal severance is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So that you have more than enough money that if you wanted to, if you decide you want to do the thirty-year roof, you certainly can afford to do that and we would just, we would just encumber that money come July first.
Okay.
So it's your, it's whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Discuss this a little bit or...
High Point Roofing, they're the ones that did the roof at the Roundhouse. They did a pretty good job there. They're quick, in and out, and quality job.
Yeah, and I've talked to the, I think there's two co-owners. I did talk to one because they did not provide us with, and it wasn't requested any RFP, but I just wanted to make sure that they had the, the license and certification to warrant a twenty-year roof. I called them the Friday after the bids were submitted and by that afternoon I had the, I had the documentation. So they've been real responsive.
Yeah. I, I can't see paying the difference, you know, for the ten-year extended warranty. It's a million-dollar difference for me.
Okay.
You take, you take advantage of the grant though if you go to the thirty-year because you're going to get half, which is sixty-two thousand compared to thirty-seven thousand for the twenty, so. And I assume if you go with the twenty-year, we're going to lose the rest of that grant.
Correct. Unless Tracy or Tracy Gilliam's... If, if we have a balance in the roofing grant, is there any opportunity to go back to the Commission on Arts and this and to reallocate that money for something else?
I think we would have to reapply because it's so stifling for a roof.
Think it's probably a pretty good chance that you lose that money.
So for twenty-seven thousand dollars, you're going to get ten more years. That's what it comes down to.
Okay. Any other comments?
It makes more sense to me, thirty years for twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, we'll start doing the math on it.
Yeah. I'll just say. I take advantage of the grant is what I think. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Want to make out a motion?
I would. I would go with thirty-year with Blackstone and for the thirty-year roof.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
In the, in the low bid amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Demerits of documentation, please.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All righty, that's good for there. Legal Director, Jeff. Family Court MOU.
Anthony wants me to make sure.
It's Deputy. Deputy, okay.
Jeff, this has only taken three years.
Yeah, well, and this is just for this year anyway. But just for the, especially for the council members who work here during all of this process I described in the memo. We've been working for a few years to try to increase the rent that the Supreme Court will pay us for family court space that we are required by statute to provide. Of course, it doesn't, in the statute, get into a lot of details about what the quality of space that's included is. We would, I would say, have one of the very nicest spaces that any county does. And of course, our rents in this market are considerably higher than a lot of places. So we've only been receiving rate of ten dollars per square foot per annum from the Supreme Court for that space, which would, was coming to about sixty-eight hundred dollars a month. In September or October last year, they agreed to increase the, their offer to fifteen dollars per square foot, which would be ten thousand, two hundred and forty a month. However, at that point, the council had been talking to our lobbyists and to some of our representatives in Charleston and thought it would be best for them to see if they could work something else out closer to what we had requested, which I think was twenty-two or twenty-three dollars a square foot. At this point, you know, near the end of last month, I realized that we don't do something for this year. Well, we stopped billing basically. October through June, we haven't influenced anything. So they haven't been paying anything. And then I realized that they, their fiscal year ends the same time ours does and they're not able to pay anything that they receive after that for this fiscal year. So what I proposed and I've worked out with the attorney down there for the Supreme Court was we just changed the MOU that they offered us, which starts out with five-year term and then renewes constantly, pretty much forever automatically. Instead, just do, up through this fiscal year, fifteen dollars a square foot, which we signed that MO, if the court, if the council agrees to sign that MOU, the Supreme Court will sign it. We can invoice them for October through June and that should be about nine-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars in revenue that we would otherwise be foregoing if we don't do something today. So I would ask the council to consider doing that. It doesn't obligate us going forward. It doesn't set us limit us to fifteen dollars per square foot in the future. I mean, we would discuss that sometime next month. We could start talking about what, what direction you want me to take in for a longer term on the MOU. But I just didn't want us to give that possible money on the table.
And if you'll recall that, that MOU that we've been fighting with the Supreme Court over for years, it was a long-term MOU that gave them all the authority, that not only set the rates, but it just renewed, it just rolled over, you know, every, about every, the first one was ten years and then renewed every five years. It didn't give you, didn't give this council any opportunity to, to make changes. And it said right in the MOU that it was the, the fair market rate for the area. Well, ten dollars a square feet is not the fair market rate for Berkeley County. And that, that's been the holdup and Jeff and I have talked about it a couple of times. I, I guess this year we should get what we can get because there, the state's in the same position that we are, that we're in that come July first, this money's not going to roll over. So we, we won't be able to, to, to capture what, what little they do owe us.
Okay. We've heard a discussion.
It's just a one-year though, to be a one-year commitment.
Yes, it'll be through tomorrow.
This expires June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Or July first, it's on your choice.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, make a motion. We accept the Family Court MOU with the Supreme Court's appeals and give you the authority to sign the document.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second is.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. I'll get that in the...
Sounds good. Okey-dokey. Next up, guess what? I think we got a proclamation. Alexa, you want to come up here, please? And Penny, you want to kind of give a little bit of background?
We have a proclamation for retiring County Administrator Alan J. Davis and thought it was fitting that his daughter Lexie should read this today as Lexie was our very first honorary councilperson. We're not sure what year that was. And today went full circle that his grandchildren were here this morning as his honorary councilpeople for his last meeting of us. So Lexie's going to read that proclamation for the council today.
Whereas Alan J. Davis came to work for Berkeley County August twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, filling a human resources professional position. And whereas Alan was promoted to the position of Deputy County Administrator and Operations Officer before being appointed County Administrator effective March fifth, two thousand and fourteen. And whereas Alan has worked with multiple elected county officers in his tenure with Berkeley County, including twelve members of County Commission and County Council. And whereas Alan's expertise in finance and budgeting empowered the governing body of Berkeley County to develop and enhance multiple county facilities during his tenure, including the Day Report Center, Recovery Resource Center, Sheriff's Department, Facilities Department, Emergency Communications and Emergency Management Center, and County Administration Annex among with, among other projects. And whereas Alan's many years of experience in human resources helped guide improvements in the work environment for Berkeley County employees, including the implementation of competitive compensation scales and other personnel retention-focused programs. Whereas Alan's nearly eighteen years of service to Berkeley County and its citizens is worthy of recognition and commendation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Council recognizes Alan J. Davis for his admirable public service to Berkeley County and wishes him all the best in retirement.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to open this up a little bit here to our council members if they have anything they would like to say. HD?
Well, wish you luck in the future with your retirement. Hope your wife don't keep you too busy with that list.
We're coming to you, man.
Got a spot for you?
I hear there's some nice places in the state down there.
In the near future, yeah. Hope to see you there.
Mr. Barnhart?
Been with you most of, oh, it's been ten years. Saw the evolution of the, the county under your leadership, the evolution of all of us under your leadership. It used to be every time I'd come into his office, I'd say, "Well, who'd you piss off today?" And he would have the list of people he pissed off that day. Hasn't gotten, hasn't gotten worse, gotten a little better. You still piss off a few people a day, but, you know, it's manageable. And now that you're retired, I don't know where are you going to put that, that, that ability to piss people off?
I'm going to sit on the front row like Bob Henner used to do.
Well, you'll be welcome. No point. And, you know, take it from somebody who's been there, enjoy your retirement. Find something to do and do it. Wife tells me that Meals on Wheels needs drivers. And all their drivers now are currently older than you, so feel free to volunteer as a driver for Meals on Wheels.
You know, one of my biggest accomplishments was we had one employee that absolutely refused to give up paper checks.
Who was it?
We had, we had five hundred employees that were doing direct deposit and one that absolutely refused to give up his paper check.
Until one day.
Until the day I walked him down to finance.
The things you accomplished are many and varied.
Almost, that almost left him speechless.
I still miss that check. But enjoy your retirement and keep you busy, family members.
Wish nothing but the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Tried it myself. I got bored after a year, so I hope it goes better for you.
Meals on Wheels needs drivers.
Maybe we can get Alan to the prom night over at the Seans. They need dancers with the ladies. But anyway, I've only been on the council for six months and Alan has made me feel welcomed. He has reached over backwards to help me. I had a lot to learn. I appreciate all of the advice and information you've given me. Of course, we've worked together when I was at Parks and Rec over the years with a lot of different things and I appreciate what you've done for Berkeley County, so thank you very much.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. Alan, you're probably one of the most hardest workers, dedicated and loyal employees and supervisors that I've had the pleasure to work with. Every time I come in, which I come in often, you're, you're working. You're, you're, you're on your computer, you're going through notes, whatever you're going, whatever you're doing. I've also had the, the privilege to have you as a boss. And with your leadership, along with the council's support, we built the first paid fire department in the state of West Virginia. And there's a tremendous amount of work that was done to be able to accomplish that. And a lot of support that was needed to accomplish that. And, and the people of Berkeley County have benefited greatly from your efforts. So I, I personally want to thank you. I want to professionally thank you for setting us up for success. And it's, it's been my pleasure to, to serve with you and for you.
Gosh, I don't know what else to say other than thank you. It has been my privilege part of this group to bring the county where it's at today. You have had your finger on the heartbeat of this county many times and have nothing but wanted to make it the best place for people to live. Doug, I'm going to call you out. Come on up, Doug.
I'm going to wait, but you got to, you got to put me on the spot.
I'm going to put a lot of people on the spot.
All right. You know, President Whitaker, you and I have the same problem. We can't keep our eyes dry anymore. You know me, Mr. Davis. I'm sitting there trying to think of, first thing, I wake up this morning and realize it's Thursday instead of not Wednesday because I work every day of the week, not, not three days a week.
We're just happy you have peace on the day.
But, so I've tried to figure out how am I going to write something and, and, you know, me, I never read anything anyway. And I just realized this morning, I'll just cheat from your notes. You've already done the work for me like always. So, you know, Mr. Davis has a, a very well old machine in his head on how to pick winners. And, you know, the team that Mr. Davis has picked over at Parkhead is, is the team that, that he brought before the, the council, most of us, and said, "These are, these are the winners, you know, these are the ones we need." I was just fortunate to be one of them ones in two thousand and fourteen and say, "Hey, we got a leader that's, that's sitting in the corner that we need to bring to the forefront." And that was Mr. Davis. And from that day forward, things just started to excel like crazy. The council was, was working well together. Mr. Davis is, is a wonderful leader. It's lonely on top because you're something, a lot of times you have some very tough decisions to make and he was never hesitant about making those decisions because he knew that, that was his job. On the HR side, Mr. Davis, as far as I can remember, and I'm getting old, so I may, may have forgotten something, maybe one, but I don't think so. I don't think we, you ever lost a, a case in HR, right? When, when, when something had to be done, you made sure everything was well documented and, and it went in, in the favor of the county council, which it should have. I can't, I can remember probably back in two thousand and fourteen that, that our budget was in the mid two, twenty million, right? Maybe a little bit more, maybe twenty-six. Today will probably, or this year will probably close out over fifty million dollars, as you know, maybe over six, as you know. As you know, the rainy day fund wasn't, wasn't the best. And you, on your financial knowledge and your, your accounting degree that you have, the rainy day fund is, is in the quality of life fund's probably over ten, I would think by now. The biggest thing that, that he worked hard and was, was, would not let go and, and was to increase the bond rate, right? our bond rating is to be able to borrow money cheaper so the, the payments are staying low so you can continue to do things that you, that you wanna do. And, and Mr. Davis, you, I can remember one time we didn't get that bond rating increase. We did once on the Berkeley County's council side, one, one grade higher on the building commission side twice, two steps higher one time, and then, but you kept working, you kept working and, and, and very successful doing that. And that, that, that comes from a lot of the time it wasted with your wife and family because I know how many hours you put in that. As, as Lexi said, you know, public safety, how far the fire came Captain Goode and I, or chief, I should say, I'm sorry, but, and Vice President Goode and I, long ways, right? Long ways. I can remember in two thousand eleven, Mr. Davis, when we took the Old Martins and Kemco property off the auction block and decided that was gonna be the new home for the Sheriff's Department, thirty-some thousand square feet, and they were accustomed to about five thousand square feet. When we turned around and decided to do that and do it all in-house at eighty-eight, eighty-seven or eighty-eight dollars a square foot, it was all that dedication that you put in time and being the, the general contractor and doing all the bidding and everything that that saved the taxpayers. In today's world, it's over three hundred dollars a square foot. Central Dispatch, you made that a very pleasant place to work. You dedicated your time and efforts in, in doing the building project to give them the state-of-the-art facility. You got, one of the first things we did was to try to get them up to where we retain their services and, and gave them a better place to work, gave them a better wage and incentivized them to, to continue down the same path that they've been on. The recovery side, Mr. Davis, and Day Report Center and Recovery Resource Center, I know you was hesitant about that. But you know what? You, you, you believed in, in what we were saying, you believed in, in what we could do and look at it today. Again, picking the right person to, to lead those, those efforts. The employees of, of the county have, are very grateful for time after time after time for you to sit there and try to get them the fair wage that they deserve, to take them from thirty-five hours to forty hours over here. Just to be competitive, right? And in order to do that, you was, you, you had to sit there and crunching the numbers and crunching numbers and then adjusting numbers and continue to crunching numbers. And you did it all and gave the taxpayers of Berkeley County a tax break. So we took care of employees, you, you, we spent more money to do that, but at the same time we decreased the tax rate not once but twice. So I can tell you, it was a, a great twelve years to be with you. And it's a twelve years of my life that I'll never forget. Also with the, the county council staff, we've shared a lot of love and a lot of tears together. The Parks and Rec side, the public health, trying to grow upon that with the quality of life, the funds that were set up, you was all part of this. And you, you've made Berkeley County a better place. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done. And Lisa, I hope you're ready to handle all his energy. And the last thing is, it didn't matter, Mr. Davis, if I called you at five o'clock in the morning, or if I called you eleven o'clock at night, you always answered that button and was always happy to help me with the situation and, and worked together to get a solution before it boiled into a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, people, too.
I wanted Doug to come up because he probably spent the most time with, with Alan and is president of this council. The next person that's gonna speak, I'm gonna put her right on the spot, Penny.
Alan, it has been my pleasure, my privilege, my honor, to work with your best teams. We have been wonderful to work. I owe you so much for you. You've supported me. You've always been there. You've always listened to me. Most of the time, we probably didn't want to, you didn't have a choice, because I got to make you, but you've always been there for me. It'll be difficult without you. But I cherish the time we had together. You've done so much for this county. And I'll miss you. I'll miss you as my boss, as my coworker, also I'll miss you as my friend here, but I know that we'll have to see each other. Lisa will make sure that you don't hide from me. But I just wanna thank you for everything. I cherish your friendship and I cherish everything that you taught me.
Who do you want me to put on the spot next? How about Tracy?
No, you.
No? Yeah? And your name Tracy?
My name is Tracy. I just wanna say thank you for giving me a chance. For just helping me to get through the interview sort of, you know, that we had together. He was a hard core man and I'm like, I don't know if I can deal with this. First day he didn't want his drama, he doesn't do drama, he didn't want drama in his office. So I'm just thankful, thankful for your leadership, thankful for, for just being our friend. You've always had our back. We've messed up.
Yes, you have.
We've messed up, I've messed up a lot, but you've always had my back. You told me where to go right, how to do it right, but you never threw me under the bus and you always said, "I got you back." And I appreciate you more than you'll ever know. I'm thankful for you. Thank you. And I love you both.
Do you have any words you'd like to say?
I wanna go speak to her.
Neither am I.
She sent her husband a letter at church.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. She said, "I understand your son is the administrator." And she said, "I don't want a job over there." So I told Alan, he said, "I'll look into it, but I don't promise you anything, Mom." And he said he kept, he interviewed her because I kept hounding him.
I'm glad you did.
I'm glad he did. I just wanna say thank you. Our Mr. Peter Swart is a lot of a big public person, but thank you. I've enjoyed his life seven years with you. I'm truly gonna miss you. You're a true asset to this county. I'm gonna miss you. Thank you.
Okay. Gary Wine? You've gotta tighten the jingle, you wanna wrap this up? It's up to him.
So I met Alan in two thousand and five. It's a phone call from a guy I'd never heard of before, Berkeley County, Alan Davis. He said, "Hey, who, what's your name?" He said, "They gave me this number, should call you." I says, "Gary Wine, I work for an IBM company." He said, "Well, I need a computer and some stuff." He said, "I don't know what it is," he said, "but they gave me this card and said, 'Call you.'" So I, relationships, so when was that, Alan? From August?
August of?
August of oh five. So we came over and set him up and got him going and fast forward a couple of years, I met Alan again, worked with him a couple of times then, and there was an opportunity to apply for a job here. So I did, and I'll never forget, the council had met, they'd interviewed me in executive session, and I learned quick his HR, his HR mannerisms. He called me, he said, "Mr. Wine," he said, "the county council might offer you the job and this salary." And I said, "Is that negotiable?" Hand to Jesus. He said, "Nope." Like, then I guess I'll take it. So we've, we've been on roofs together, replacing shingles, we've torn roofs off family members' houses, we've had lunch, breakfast, dinner, and Doug wasn't lying. The man is available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So first and foremost, leadership. The first in and the last out every damn day. I can't beat him to work. I mean, I've slept on Doug's couch in his office when he was here, and Alan woke me up and said, "Why are you here?" So.
A lot of people slept on my couch, I didn't know.
It's insane.
That's all we had to have him clean before we gave him back to.
Right. You, you can't imagine, you know, he, he's had a hand, as you heard, in many different pieces of this organization, personally, professionally. He's a great leader. He is probably the single best manager I've ever met in my life. And I've been in this game a long time, I've had very few managers, but this man manages hands-off. You produce and you do it, and. Does he bother you? He doesn't bother me. He can, example in leadership is beyond, it is perfect. Lisa, God bless you. We've talked many times, the tears in his eyes, January the second or third that he handed his resignation to him, he said, he didn't talk. He said, "It's time," right? I'm blessed that I've learned what Penny has learned, right? I'm also blessed that the county council has the faith in me to let me try and fill those shoes. The organization is in a great place, but there's two things to remember. One, I have his new cell phone number, and if his two board, Mr. Catlett, he is also in the Magistil district that is unrepresented, so there's opportunity. He can leverage those government skillsets on the upside. Alan, thank you. Thank you so much. Everybody here thanks you, and we look forward to hearing what happens next in the Davis family, those coming and going and growing and so on and so forth. Thanks.
Tracy and Elizabeth, I'm gonna bring you both on the spot.
First, thank you for hiring me. And I just want to restate, I spent twenty years in a nonprofit and the supervisors and bosses I had were awful compared to you. And I loved the fact that you just said, "Here's your job, do it," and you never bothered me. And I only came to you when I had a problem that was larger than me or that wasn't in my own lane, and you handled it, and I didn't have to. And that was refreshing. I have one job and I try to do it very well, but I just wanna thank you. I have sat back and watched, watched your leadership and taken notes and watched your stewardship, which I appreciate as a resident of the county. And it's been a pleasure. And I'll be happy, Elizabeth, if you want. I didn't mean to be boring. No, no, no. I just wanna say thank you, even though you terrified me my first day. I, you have the jar of the ashes of your former employees in your office. And you said, "The job is eight to five, Monday through Friday, but if you're here at eight, you're late." And then you said, "And if you're not getting a warm welcome," that's okay, don't worry about it because I'm not trying to give you one. And, and then, and then you just sent me with Penny on my way. And like you already said, yeah, you don't bother, you trust in your staff. And I know I've only been here for a little bit, but like, I've loved every bit of it after that initial scare on the first day, but.
We still have that every Thursday.
But yes.
Thank you. Anthony and Jeff, come on up here.
Alan, thank you first and foremost for going out with a bang and giving us yet another day off. He's always looking out for the employees.
I know what's important.
Always looking out for the employees, always fighting for his staff, and that can get lost sometimes when you're at the top. But I think it's very, everybody, I think, is very appreciative of that. If you look anywhere around this organization, this county, the facilities, your mark is on there in some way through your leadership. And people say, "Well, it'll be tough shoes to fill for Gary to come in and do what Alan's done." But really what Alan's done is making so much easier. He's standing on the shoulder of a giant that's gonna make it a much easier operation for him by picking the right people and getting the things in place. For that, I just wanted to thank you. And I think Tracy's got a form for you to, to fill out for boards and commissions. There's a lot of vacancies. We'll, we'll get that to you.
I'll do that right first. Thank you.
Alan, I just wanna say thank you for recommending the council to hire me and getting me up here. My family's driving up here. Thanks for the way you always put our families first, for, for us, that if I need time off, I know to take care of my mom or my wife or something, I know it'll be all right. And that's, that means a lot, so thank you.
Hey, Matt. Where's Matt at? Come on up, man.
I'll pack a lunch.
First of all, I just wanna thank Mr. Davis for being the consummate professional. And I say that as a journalist because there were many elected and unelected officials in my previous life that would not be as responsive, as professional, every single time. And he called back when he didn't have to, he answered questions he didn't wanna answer, he gave public information without hesitation. And for that alone, I've always had a deep amount of respect and appreciation for. As an underling here at Berkeley County Government, it's been an up and down adventure. I've learned a lot from Mr. Davis. I don't say it out loud, but I've watched what he does and how he does it, how he goes about, how he carries himself as a person, as an individual. I'm a non-verbal person. I watch people's actions and I don't really listen to their words as much as I probably should, but I, I've learned a lot from him. And I just wanna thank you for this opportunity. Without library much further, I leaped from a Titanic in January twenty twenty-one, and the life raft has been great. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I think that has everybody in our office.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'm gonna open it up to the other outside offices. Brian, Dan, Randy, Mike, come on up.
Alan, May first, twenty fifteen, you offered me a position here with this county. Since that day, you've been involved in my professional career and my personal life that are both important to me, and you supported each one of them. I've grown my career here with the county, the starting out, with just working with engineering. Now I'm doing engineering, planning, dealing with all the inspectors, everything. And that's because of your support. You, you're the type of leader that let me lead, but when discussions were needed, we had them, but they were always professional. You never belittled me in any way. You encouraged me to change and make things different. And to that, I thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Alan, August first, twenty sixteen, is when I started with the county. You offered me this position and I don't know why, because I didn't know what I was doing. It's not like I had supervisor experience on my resume, but you trusted me and you've trusted me for the last seven years. I don't, I can't think of times that I've come to you and said, "Alan, I'd like to do this," or "I'd like to do that," and you say, "No." You have said to me over and over again, "Tim, I trust you and I support you." And you should be able to look back at. at, there's a lot of accomplishments, but just the ones that you've accomplished through, maybe you should be able to look back with great satisfaction on the work that, that you've done through the community corrections programs in Berkeley County. There are thousands, literally thousands of lives that have been impacted for the better, because you saw, you had a vision, and you implemented it. I'm grateful for your leadership and your friendship. I wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you, Tim. Dominic, come on up.
To those that don't know me, Dominic Gourcini, I'm the felony coordinator for Berkeley County Prosecutor's Office. You know, I could share things, but it'd simply be rehashing everyone's sentiments about Alan. So instead, I'll speak as someone who was born and raised in Berkeley County, save for a handful of years in Morgantown at college. But, you know, I can definitively say that Berkeley County is better now than it was in 1991 when I was born. There are more opportunities that are here today, and I think, you know, that can be attributed to Alan's leadership as county administrator. So we certainly wish you the best, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Don. Got a couple people outside the door out there, so... Mr. Lang? And, yep. Mike? Come on up, Mike.
If you get the Lang boys up here, just pull out your checkbook.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity. Mr. Vice President, happy birthday.
Thanks, sir. Happy birthday, eh?
That's right. On behalf of me and my staff, we thank you for the July third holiday. But I made a new secret. When I met Alan Davis, I thought he was a devil. I was told he was a devil. Straight up. I've said that many times, haven't I? Many times. I've been in the county for twelve years. I didn't get to meet Mr. Davis until I interviewed for this position. I can tell you, he's helped me grow personally and professionally. He has pushed me forward when I needed to push, and he's pulled me back when I needed to stop. He's helped me grow, he's helped me learn. I've learned a lot like everybody else did by watching. And just, you know, after twenty-five years in prison, worked for Alan pretty easy. I hate to say it, but he was always there when I called. And he was the same guy twenty-four-seven. You knew to answer your kidding. Not, not no, but hell no. But I think I do want your go-to responses. You know, usually I follow your instructions to the T. Today I didn't. You asked for no fanfare. It didn't want to be in the spotlight. Ted, this morning, as you know, we pledge the flag every morning judicial center. This morning, we threw this for you. There's photos behind that of everybody out there this morning. Okay? I'm gonna turn my hearing aids off, face your family. I'm not gonna hear it. I'm gonna go one step further. Everybody talked, you had your hand in this, you had your hand in that. Well, I got together with some folks, and we made a snapshot of what we could of some of the stuff you had your hand in. This is a brief snapshot of the things that I knew you did. Sir, we get muted here the next couple minutes. Sir, inside that box is things you had a hand in personally, from the sheriff's office to home confinement, to Berkeley Fire, to Homeland Security, for our security. Everybody got a little bit of something in that box for you, but that'd be good. We're gonna miss you, Alan. We're gonna welcome Gary or we're gonna, but we're gonna miss you. Alan, I thank you for anything you've done for me. We got the box, we'll put it in. I mean, it's right here.
We, I'll open up the floor to anybody else from the county would like to say a few words? Sure, come on up.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow up after that, but you and I only got to spend about a year together where things made a slight change. I didn't get the privilege of getting all the money that everyone else did. But in that year that we were able to spend some time together, your dedication to this county and improving things for its inhabitants and employees is unmatched. I don't think I've ever worked for anyone that's been so dedicated. And for that, I, I thank you for giving me the strength and the courage to also make those changes. I would like to say that when I first started, everyone kept warning me about Alan. They said, "Oh, my God, he's careful. He's, he's kinda tough." And I'd say, "Oh, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about." And he'd say, "I'm not the woman fuzzy type. I'm not the woman fuzzy type. Alan, that's all I ever got from you." And I really appreciate that. You made things so pleasant for me while working here, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jack? Oh, we'll get Jen up here, too. Come on up. I saw his, I saw his hand go up first, Jen, I'm sorry.
Yeah. First of all, thank you all for everything all of you do, especially Mr. Davis, of course. And Penny, I gotta apologize to you for my sugar alarm going off while you was giving your speech. So I had to garden down here and get a Reese cup real quick. But if you ever get bored sitting at home, and Lisa, if you need some help here, I can always say, "Mr. Davis, you ain't gonna believe what happened." Or if you've waited to hear this story, yeah. I'd only come in, bake a couple, three, four times a week, and, and tell Mr. Davis what was going on with the county, the roof projects, whatever we was doing, snow removal, kind of snow's coming. You know, whenever... My, my biggest memory of Alan was probably two years ago, he looked me dead in the eye on a Wednesday. It was calling for two feet of snow. Wednesday night, he said, "Thursday is the last budget meeting. We will not be closed." Okay, well, I don't know what I'm gonna do with two foot of snow, but thank God it didn't come. So the, the other thing that Mr. Wine might be aware of is, is it seemed like whenever we get to purchase a new piece of snow equipment, it don't snow. So Gary, I'll be hitting...
Great insurance policy.
It is a great insurance policy. I got like fifteen bags of salt left from this past year. So, but in everything, Mr. Davis, thank you for all you've done for me. I remember staying there in front of the council at that time and being interviewed for the facility director job. Went home, was at Linton Brothers Malkin, got a phone call, can you come see me? I said, "I need to put my good clothes on." He says, "Come on in here." So I took my muck boots off, I turned the hallway, and walked in his office with socks, and he offered me the facility job. And it's been a pleasure working for you, sir, and all of you.
Jen?
So I, I guess I'll just start by saying thank you again for having faith in, in me again, in the position that, at emergency communications, and to let me have my vision and run with it. Maybe too far, and maybe I get a little carried away, but I always want the best for the citizens, and I think you always want the best for the citizens. My staff truly appreciates what you've done for emergency communications. They see that it's not just me, it's the support of the council, the support of you, and everyone else. On a personal level, you know, it was super exciting for me to get the call from you about three years ago, almost exactly that I was being selected for this position. I had, was that my other employers? I baked the cake, I walked in, I set the cake down. I said, "I'm resigning. I'm doing my, I'm not resigning, I'm retiring." I put in my notice, and I was the most excited person in the world. And I started here two days after my retirement. And it was, it has been the best experience by far. You've been a huge part of that. Very, very, very thankful on a personal note also. It's true, if there's, you know, we can always come to you with anything. You know, you're always there to support us, support our families. You know, personally with my husband's illness, you've always asked, "How's he doing?" And that goes a long way by just saying, "Hey, how's your husband doing?" And it's, it's, it's personal, and I've not had that experience. So thank you very much. My staff has just signed a little card for you. I couldn't bring them all with me, but they wanted to let you know how, how thankful we are. Thank you.
Randy, come on up.
When I was hired with the county, I came from a different world. And Chief Okinour and Alan hired me with faith that I could do the job and provide the services to the communities. Thank you for taking that chance on me. With your leadership, the thing I remem, that I remember the most, sticks in my mind, you were always there, whether it was good or bad. You always had our backs, every one of you. You always had our backs. You always answered the call whenever the phone, you made the phone call. And usually when, from our world, when we were calling you, it wasn't good news, but you always answered that call and always was there with, with advice on, on the direction that we should go. When I was first hired, I was kind of, these, these are a bit of, these are a bit of arguments, but that's part of the leadership and part of being able to support all of your department heads. I recall some of the department heads saying to me, some things that you always said, obviously you've got the right people in the right places in the firm, but I believe that your leadership, Berkeley County, is a better place. You have helped guide the citizens, helped guide our communities to be in a better place and be safe. Thank you and enjoy the retirement.
Anybody else from the county like to speak that I missed or didn't say? I wanted the family to hear how important...
Or how much he means to us and all, and all of Berkeley County, not just us, but I mean, he, he, I'm sure...
Go forward.
I'm sure, I'm sure that he has carried out the wishes of the councils, you know, of all the people that sit on this bench. He's carried his wishes out that sometimes he probably didn't agree with. But he is, he is so loyal that, you know, and I say it again, the dedication that Alan has and has brought forth. You don't, you don't find employees like this. You don't find leaders like this. You don't find bosses like this. You know, he's, he's just always there. And, you know, even though we're wishing him well today, and, and we do welcome Gary, and, you know, and Gary will have a different style. He'll have a different way of doing things, and that's the way things work. That's the way it's supposed to work, you know? But like I said earlier, Alan has set us up for success. And this county has been very successful in nearly every endeavor we've ever tried to, to move forward with, from quality of life, improving the quality of life, to, to bringing jobs here, opportunities here that I know that, not that I would've looked anywhere other than where I look, but, but I could have, other people can. Not everybody wants to be a farmer. There's, there's other people who want to do other things. And this county has a lot of opportunities today that we've never had before. So I'm gonna finish what I gotta say so that maybe Jim can finish.
Well, he, this is the reason why we're a good team, because when I can start, he can finish. But I wanted to also open it up to the family, if they had anything to say, because there's the, the matriarch that started it all. Would you like to say a few words about your son?
His work ethic started when he was fifteen years old. He wanted to go to work at Joe the Motorist as a stock boy. And the coach at Williams Ford High was upset with his dad because he wouldn't let him play football. And his dad said, "I'd rather see him have some serious time working and having a good attitude than to be playing football." So then he decides he wants a motorcycle. His dad and I disagreed on two things. A motorcycle, his dad left him get one. At seventeen, when he was out of high school, he wanted to join the Air Force, and I said, "No way." Because every time his dad took vacation, we never took vacation. His dad was a workaholic like he is. His, he said, "Mom, I hate when dad takes vacation." Well, we lived in the country, painted a house every year, didn't he, Alan? We did, we did all the fire beds. And I'm so surprised that he has fire beds now that he doesn't. But his dad had a work, a work ethic also. And he worked. He come home from school one day, one evening, and he said, "Mom, I've joined the Air Force." I said, "No, you haven't." His dad came in behind him, he said, "He wants, he don't like the strictness at home with me." So I've signed for him. So he went to the Air Force. He was eighteen at Christmas time and away from home for the first time. But he does have a good work ethic, and he's a good son.
Now, all this...
Checks on me every morning.
Well, his work, work ethic now...
I don't know what he's gonna do when he's retired, whether he'll check on me or not.
I'm afraid if I don't, he'll be setting on my board.
Lisa?
But he's been a good son.
I just want to say, some of you I know very well, and others I haven't had the opportunity to meet, and I'm sorry for that. And on behalf of the family, I thank all of you for the time that you've got to spend with Alan. But I'm selfish, and I just can't wait. Some of you have wished me well, that I'm gonna be with him twenty-four-seven. As you know, some of you know, we found each other late in life. I can't wait to have them all to myself. So I'm sorry you're gonna miss him. I'm sorry you're gonna miss him, but I can't wait to have them all to me. So thank you all very much for all you've meant to him and all you've done for him and with him. But we really do appreciate it.
There's one thing about the work, work ethic of our fathers. He was about the same way as Alan's dad. My dad said, you know, "If you got time to play football, you got time to work." So...
Yes, you can come to business.
All right. Yes, indeed.
Mr. Davis, I, I think we all know in this room that one of the things that this wonderful nation that we live in today lacks structure, right? A lot of people out there lack structure in their life. And, and today's a fine example of how structure works its best, because I know you're the most structured person that I've ever met. It's all, it's either black or white, but there's very, very seldom ever gray. But yet, every one of your department heads and your employees stood up here and called you friend. That's amazing.
Alan, your turn.
I've always said my primary job here was to keep the county council out of guilt despite your best efforts.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Barnhart, with you, it's questionable sometimes.
It's, it's been...
Yeah, I mean, you walk that line. And, and I'm happy to say that the, the rapport that I've built with this counseling, with the employees, I mean, you have been my, in fact, I've spent more time here with my work family than I have with my family, man.
We will be available for counseling.
The past eighteen years professionally have been very, very rewarding, and, and I will miss it. But I'm looking forward to spending more time with, with my family. They will tell you, particularly early on in this job, when I got home on Friday night, no one bothered. It took me, it took me that long to kind of decompress and, and be ready to, to spend time. So this has been, this has been the highlight of my career, and I do appreciate the opportunities that you can, and I will miss most of my total workers. Some, not so much. But, the, the elected, this elected body, I've worked in local government now for 42 years, and I've always served at the pleasure of the council and this, or the commission. And this elected body has been by far the, the most supportive and most generous. And I do appreciate your support of the employees. The employees recognize your efforts. They don't say it to your face, but they do, they do acknowledge what you do for them. On behalf of the county employees, thank you.
It's been our pleasure. Alan, thank you. Okay. We have just a little bit more business to take care of, so I'm going to ask if there's any items from the public. If not, we have an executive session?
Yeah, we need probably five minutes in executive session real quick for personnel matter.
Mr. President, I agree to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Okay, a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session for personnel.
Lisa, we'll be ready now.
Please, we'll be ready now.